Okay, we'll call you to order at 5:34. Can somebody take? It's Alex.
Yeah, do something, yeah.
Do something. All right. We have a forum. Terry with Chris.
Yes, present.
Alex Burke, present. Ben Casari. We also have Jean Akely, the director of the library, and Matt, the assistant director of the library. Okay, we have first on the agenda approval of minutes. Those minutes are for meetings of October 19th and December 20th. Those who are emailed out, and everybody get them, because she has to read them. Any changes, modifications, adjustments?
Not noted.
I think the December 15th one was, I mean, the December one was on the 15th.
Oh, right.
That's what the agenda is. And that's what's on the town website.
Right.
That's what they have up on the calendar.
December 15th?
Yes.
So with that change, is there a motion to approve the minutes as correct for both dates, December 15th and October 19th? Okay, Eric moves it, Alex seconds it, and vote is yes. Okay. The minutes are approved. The directors report.
Okay, you still want me to read it? Do you hold your hand?
Anything on here that I didn't scan it earlier? I guess I could, so there was a malfunction?
Yes.
A little stretched. Okay, any questions or observations about these guys? The rest is reported.
Erin, Jean, would you expand a bit upon this EBSCO software product, Library Aware?
Do you want to copy?
Yes.
Well, just verbalize it.
Yeah, I want to tell her and describe that. She should say something to that. So Library Aware is an EBSO product that hopefully will help us with marketing our collections to the public. It's similar to a couple of other products that we have in purpose that Library Aware may be able to take their place, where they can look at our catalog, at what our news items are, and patrons can sign up for various newsletters to hear about new. If they wanted to hear only about our news books and mysteries, they would get weekly newsletter outcomes, or science fiction, things like that. And it also is really good help all staff be able to participate in marketing things to the public, because it's very user-friendly and it's meant for librarians who don't necessarily have a background in graphic design, or web design, or anything like that. So it's meant to kind of help all of us participate in this process.
Where does this marketing take those?
Online, it's all online. Actually, you can do printable players and things like that as well.
Could they use print things up there?
Yes, yes.
But online, you would find it on Facebook, TikTok? And I don't go on them, so I...
So currently, we have one piece of Library Aware. It's similar to something we use now called FixMe, in which we can craft messaging for platforms like Twitter, Facebook, Instagram, LinkedIn. And you can craft your messages, add your graphics and things like that, and set it up basically on a timer, so that it posts when you want it to post. So it posts on...
On any one of those platforms?
And it'll post on maybe like a Sunday. We might not be at work, but we're still able to let people know about various things in a library.
But once it's posted, does it stay posted?
Yes. Yeah.
And you access this from home?
Library Aware?
Yeah.
Yes.
So if you can't use it in an employee, if something came up, you became aware of, any one of you could go on and change and adjust it?
Exactly.
There's a whole interface.
So it's...
And it compiles statistics too, is that right?
It will compile statistics. They have templates as well for creating either printable players or online kinds of banners, web banners, things like that. But it's just very user-friendly.
Is it fully on a computer here?
No, it's online.
Oh, is it on a machine? You just go into...
Yep, we each will, all staff will be able to...
Well, yeah, okay. So we're talking about taking our space on our users' devices?
Not at all. I have to say that our, our Lucy brochures and all that will not be as wonderful as they are now, because we have a very talented professional graphic designer on staff, but they will be as good as they can be with idiots like me trying to make something pretty.
Still something everybody will...
Great.
Do it in the best way possible.
Yep.
And it's satisfying, you know? We were stuck on something, I forget what it was. Catherine figured it out, and she felt really good about it. Yeah, but it's not like, I don't know if you've ever looked at her screen, but she's in it, it's all, it was like a pilot's thing. It's really overwhelming.
Some of the pilots on Facebook, the...
Yes.
Just hoping that I, again, I don't hear well, that a library patron could request a timely notification of new acquisition, for example, of, you mentioned history books, book books, whatever.
Exactly. Exactly. So we have to set that up. Our process of, the purchase has gone through, but now it's the setup period, where we'll get all staff logged in. And I think we have a couple of trainings that we're going to be able to all utilize and hopefully get right into it. So when we set that up right now on our website, that's where patrons have a webpage that you can go to to sign up for various things, like our newsletter, the children's newsletter for Wildberry, which does let you know about our newest catalog items that we've received. Library Aware will allow patrons to get more specific in their addresses and get more newsletters.
They would. This is also maybe the one they need to interface, say, with Catherine to articulate their needs, and she would then set up?
She could, they could, yeah. But it's going to be so easy.
Okay, if it's on, do this.
Absolutely. They'll put the link, and it'll ask them, what are you interested in? Are you interested in biographies? Are you interested in historical fiction? And Situate actually is the library that I had been snooping on to see how, and I was like, how do they host so many of these newsletters going out to let people know what their newest material is? And that's when I asked Library Aware to give us a presentation. I don't know about that.
So we have, first they did online.
We have, yeah.
So that would then go into the surveys we have of visits? If somebody, it would go into our statistics as visits if somebody went on there? Is that true?
You would be able to track how many times you were actually utilizing this?
We will, it would be subscribers more than visits. So we track visits to our website. But so for, you are reporting on subscrib, how many people have subscribed to the newsletter of Library Aware?
Yeah. So we'd see usage, we'd just be considering the formatting.
Yep.
And we have Creativebug, which is another software. And I just went to their dashboard this morning, and I'm able to see get very deep, have you gone there yet?
Yeah.
Get very detailed data about where our engines are going and what they're lingering on.
Not specific names of patrons?
Right, oh, no.
Or any patron data, but just information on X amount of people looked at that this video training you on how to use Watercolor, or X amount of people learned how to knit.
And that's Library Aware or the other?
That's Creative, that's by...
That is Library Aware. And somebody goes in, do you know who that person was?
Library Aware has their email, because they're signing up to receive. So it's kind of like our monthly newsletter that goes out. There are emails there, because they watch and receive.
So they know, somebody's going to know.
It is, but it's not connected to their account with us in any way, or their names, or address, or anything like that.
You want to make a question, that we want to be able to ensure people that, you know, the privacy is tracked. The language is tracked.
Right.
All right. Can you hear me?
Yeah, I can.
It's fascinating.
All the software packets which we all want to utilize just don't have control of them mentally.
And it's turning into quite a list. Canopy and Poopla and...
I downloaded Poopla for the first time, and put it on my TV. I've got Canopy on already, using that. It's, I was on Poopla looking at what we had to offer. I clicked on it, and I said, okay. It's fine.
Yeah.
Figure it out.
And there are a lot of ebooks on there simultaneously, so use ebooks too.
Yeah.
That's true.
It's awesome.
All right, so we have the votes to accept the selected report? Would you do that?
I think so.
Okay, so you want to do this?
So we've got the statistic report and the purchase summary.
I do.
How do you do that? Are you able to?
I did. They printed smaller, I don't think you can turn it on.
Try to add to that mine.
Sorry.
He does.
I did, I did.
Okay.
I did it as well.
Okay, thank you.
So not too, too much to report, except what I just said is that the new NTL creates adult take and make is off and running. I think it's off to a great start, with 25 participants last month. So that was great.
Is that an online thing, or an in-person thing, or what all?
It's a combination, Thomas. So it's called a take and make, and it's based on something that they run in children's.
So it's called it?
Right, a lot of libraries, it used to be called, pre-COVID, it was called make and take, where children come to the library, you make something, and you take it home. And so with COVID, it's...
Yet again.
And yes, now you're a kit. So this kit was created for children, decorative toys that would really be, and adults would sign up, and they would pick up their head and then watch it on Creativebug, which is one of the offerings we were just talking about. And they get a tutorial with an instructor, popping an art background or something like that. And they watch that, and they create their, whatever the practice is.
This one's a little different. We're having Chinese calligraphy done, but with a presenter who's actually going to do a Zoom presentation with them. But I made up the kits, so that they can put them up here. And I think that's still maybe doing.
And that's coming up this Saturday.
Yes.
So there's still time to say, we'll get here.
Yes.
She didn't mention that to me, that she was doing that, so.
Yeah, I think it's going to be...
Where do these kits get assembled or created?
Right here.
Follow a recipe?
We don't have a lot of people registered for this one, but for the one, we have 30. We had our donors, volunteers put that together.
Where do you get the raw materials, parts and pieces?
Purchased from France, we have the materials. The first two have been a little bit pricier than I wanted, but I justified that, because we were launching it. But now Pam, who's a monthly presser on a friend, is going to help out a little bit. She's going to, we're going to try and bring the cost down. What she's going to do on beating, she's going to hold costs for the beads. So it's been, you know, I think it's great.
And it's learning, you know, it's learning in the mind. One of the things, that's a kit, our interactive movie kits that we just picked off, Harry Potter's 20th anniversary of the first movie. And the interactive movie kits are a fun way to participate in that, but also it's literacy-based, because it comes with a script. And you read the script. So the parents or whoever can take home a kit brought to six kids, and it comes with things like a tissue, with burry spots, jelly beans that have diverse flavors and everything from Harry Potter and confetti. And the script tells you to...
You have jelly beans.
Yes. And the script tells you to do certain things at certain parts of the movie, like every time you say Oliver's name, do this. So things like that. So it's neat. And my sister's speech pathologist, and I was talking to her about it. She thought, wow, that might be useful, helping kids who have speech issues, because you're reading this, or if you're acting it out, or speaking things, and you say something at a particular time during the movie, but it's very fun. So that just...
That's going to be once a month?
Every month I will relist it, but right now we only have one kit. So we are purchasing, thanks to the funds, everything that goes in the kit. So we're going to see how expensive it is and how popular it is. But there are scripts that you can find from other librarians online for things for kids as little, who might be interested in Frozen, to adults who want horror movie ones. It just, yeah, it's whole. All kinds of stuff, like the librarians want to share.
We know what's doing.
Bartling. Except we don't care to have.
It's all around us.
Okay, so I'm afraid my budget sheet will be pretty strict too. I'm glad you didn't get lost next time. Does anybody need to have their own line of supply? So pretty, you know, pretty standard per people in a year, which we have passed, which that's reflected on the top by the orange square. So we're at 50% of the year. At 12, December 31st, in salaries, we've spent 48% or under. In total of our expenses, we've spent 65%. Total municipal budget that we manage, we're at 53%. The building maintenance utility and utilities fund, which James Redd manages, is at 34%. So the total municipal budget for the state, what they look at, is 50%. So we're right on course. State aid is a little altered here, because I included what we budgeted previously for state aid for salaries, and then included the increases that occurred back in October for two staff people. So we're at 20% of that budget. Everything else is pretty much the same as it was last time. Does anybody have any questions?
So the bottom line here, in the orange column, 1, 2, 3, 4, from the left to from the right, down the bottom, is 1, 13, 8, 11.
Yes.
Those are...
Our funds.
Those are the funds?
Yes. But it does not include, I do not include in there the Navy Foundation or donation, which I suppose is time to include in there. So I will do that.
That's relevant. Because then act like drunken sailors, spending it, huh? But no, are there, there are restrictions within some of these funds, are there not?
Yes, but what's reflected here is what is spendable.
This is what is spendable?
Yes.
Is it not the entire corpus?
No, this is the interest, these are the figures that I get from the town treasurer.
Okay.
That are spendable.
Some of we cannot spend the...
We can spend this amount, but there are other amounts that we can't spend. So I open that here, what we can't spend.
The other amounts being principal, which generates, this is an accumulation of, let's say, dividends or interest?
This is interest on investments of some kind.
Yes, yes. And I'm hoping to get more specific information for these summaries, which they told me they could do, but what I got was a ledger sheet that made absolutely no sense to me.
The Lois Smith Fund is up to $26,000.
I know, I was amazed.
We started with 10, didn't we?
It seems to me, when I first became a trustee, it was really small.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It went good with that address. I think that we can spend principal and interest on that.
I believe so.
We're going to put that on the back burner as we move forward.
Yeah.
All right.
So I copied and pasted Town Archives Management Process. So I got it in new business, and I gave it its own.
All right. The Town Archives Management Process. So I guess we're ready probably to move forward on this. As far as I know, whatever needs to be catalogued in Town Hall has been catalogued. We still have some cat inventorying and cataloguing to do here?
Yes, so it's been inventoried in Town Hall as well.
It has. As far as, as far as I'm told, everything has been inventoried there. You're ready to go to the next step. Again, I think, not sure what's happening with the Historical Commission. They have very much been able to be done to start off with. So I think the next step in the process to move this forward is putting some money in place, drawing in an archivist, who will then assess and evaluate the documents that have been catalogued and make a determination, should they be digitized, or in our case, if they go through documents, take them off the shelf and get rid of them, because there are already multiple locations. Some things that we may have, may already be digitized and be online. I don't know if it's necessary to duplicate that. So this is the conversation we need to have with professionals.
Right. I think at the end of every sentence, we can say, this is why we need a specialist.
Absolutely.
Because we can come up with all of the questions, but we never have the answers.
Can we put a reverse for just a minute?
Yeah.
Jane's work, as begun, has now been completed.
No. Oh, no. Sally and you had talked about, sorry, Sally and Ryan, and I believe you had talked about two of you working on it. She is not able to do that now, but I do have a librarian, a very recently retired librarian that worked with Catherine in Ainsbury, who seems interested in helping us with that.
Give me this stuff.
It's a volunteer?
Oh, I can, I've just been waiting for you to show up and take it.
No, no, this is, this is your library, you're the director.
Tell Alex where you want to...
Information as released was Sally will accept and do.
Right.
And you're in second place, Alex, if needed. Okay, and that's how I've lived it mentally.
All right, that's fine. So, yep, it's all set to go.
It's good to have the conversation.
Yeah. It's all set to go. I don't think it will take that long. It's not a massive amount of materials.
That's the other thing, from brief conversation with Leslie, whatever has to be digitized there is not too extensive. I think most of it has been done from what, the way she made maintenance, the way she described it to me. So whatever we need to do going forward to digitize is not a lot of documents. The question then became, that's been proposed through that recent email that we got, the email train, about how to utilize the NATE money. And I would like us to think about authorizing the use of UP2, making available $30,000 for this purpose. Don't know if we need that much, but if that's available, it'll do, it'll move the process along. We don't have to go to town meeting. We can get the process going now, and not have to wait until the summer or the fall to get it going. And the money is available. I know in fact that the money is available. So let's utilize it for the greater good of the community. It still leaves us quite a while to do other stuff. And if we obviously don't need the whole 30, it comes back into the pot to be utilized for something else. So I think that's probably the approach we should take. Make, you know, make that money available. We're part of the greater community, and that's an indicator that we are. At least that's my thought anyway. Any other thoughts? Light open, so.
Well, the, I mean, I know where you're going, so I think, I think we need to, and I think you all read the email from the gentleman from Burlington. It was very helpful. And, you know, I was struck by, I feel like we need to, he advised us, he encouraged us, to think about what specifically we would want a position to be and to do. And I think I said this to Erin earlier today. I feel like, you know, there are two ways to go. And the town clerk may be more interested in the first way, because she may be looking at it differently. But, you know, are we just inventorying, digitizing, uploading to the town site, and then moving on? Or are we, as the gentleman from Burlington encourages us to do, are we, document and curate the town's history? Like, from my perspective has always been, it's not just about digitizing records and throwing them up online, calling it a day. I think it's really, because we do have some wonderful records here. We do have wonderful history. A lot of it is put online already by the Historical Society. But I think the specialist could come on board and actually curate town history a little bit. But I defer to you on this, because so much of that is already going on to the other position, to the other organization, and I don't want to duplicate. Does that make any sense?
I see it more narrowly at the moment, okay? We've not here at the library got a good handle on what all is within the K-Brown Room.
Would you repeat that?
We don't know what's in the K-Brown Room. We've not finished the cataloguing.
So that absolutely has to be done. After that, you know, the next steps is, are we looking to just sort of get everything digitized? and classified, because it needs to be classified, mind your needs and whatnot for online stuff? Or are we, are we creating a process for the future where we're, again, for lack of a better word, curating the town's history?
No.
Yeah, I would agree, I think we're curating the town's history.
No.
I see it, I think maybe it's Alex, doesn't it, Terry? That the initial task is to gather all of this, get it all online. And we hire somebody to do that. Now, that process may, may be repeated a couple of five years down the line. I don't think you need to have a full-time archivist for the town.
I don't mean full-time, I mean maybe ten hours a week.
Yeah, even that, even this, that may evolve. I think I'm looking at this as a, the initial task is to get everything catalogued, digitized, and online. Okay. Once that's done, and people absorb what that is, I think you then look at and say, okay, are there tasks that we should be doing beyond this? And if there are, and people are in agreement with that, what's that cost? Who's going to be responsible for it? You know, that's something I think is a second step, a third step down the line. I see now it's getting this stuff online, satisfying that need, and moving forward from that, and then just having this periodic evaluation and assessment. Documents coming in that should then be in this category? Are we, in essence, have the documents that are going to be digitized? Or what's going to come in as we move forward that has to be digitized and put up on the website?
Potentially any, you know, really, people made donations and several...
So, so you accumulate those, and once you have a, you know, amount of that, maybe it's faster than two years, I don't know. But if you don't get anything for a couple of years, you don't really, you know...
In my hometown, in the Fingers, about a year and a half to two years ago, there was a group of people who decided to do some fundraising for the community by looking at the history of the community. And what they did, to the best of my understanding, was to do some things like make postcards of old buildings or an old restaurant in the town. If you're from, the town is Auburn, New York, but if you're from Auburn, you will know. And then it says that above the photograph. That was the initial piece. And then people bought the postcards and they put the money toward a charitable organization for food for people in the community because there was really a lack of, and they made, I don't know how much, twenty thousand dollars or something. Now, they also have a Facebook page called, if you're from Auburn, you know that. And people put old photographs on there and just comment on them. Or pieces of high school yearbooks, things like that. And I think that that is something that would really get the community a little bit interested too. If you have a picture of the farm stand that used to be on Route One, that's gone now.
Yep.
Or anything. People would go, I know that.
Yep.
You know, those things are happening in this area. In a lot of new report, but also in Newbury, and you're probably familiar with, I don't know who does the posts, of the pictures that are half-old, half-new, half a picture from eighteen hundred and two and a half today. And they're really, yeah, they're really great.
Where are they?
I mentioned on Facebook.
Oh, I know.
In the, is it the Friends of Newbury or Friendly, I can't remember.
It's Old Byfield, it's... There's the Newbury Port History Box.
Yeah.
There's good people in Newbury Port.
Yes.
There's...
Nice people of Newbury, and nice people of Newbury. Yeah, so all...
All kinds of stuff.
So all of these people are posting this?
And now that you bring this up, it's great information that if there was an archivist or whoever, it would be great to include those kinds of things in whatever kind of history were documented because it comes from places that's not necessarily a museum or coming from families and...
I mean, that's, that's kind of what I'm getting at in, you know, just, and I'm just putting the, you know, a different way of looking at things.
Perfect.
It's great if you can structure, this is from the man... It's great if you can structure this position to helping document and curate town history. My ideal vision for municipal archives has the archivists splitting their time equally between the clerk's office and the library. They talk about, you know, if it's a library staff position, which we're not necessarily talking about, but that he sees the reference skills of this person as the key to making the archives work properly. And as such, I always envision a municipal archivist with a strong reference skill set. So it's, you know, it's, the town, the digital Commonwealth is where so many libraries do this.
Right.
For nothing. The town, I know there's the proprietary issues and that, you know, we feel we want the, or Leslie especially wants the, all the records on the town site. But it's, you know, it's a very plain and very kind of unappealing site as opposed to Digital Commonwealth or even the Shrav site, the Society for Massachusetts Archives, whatever, that makes it, you know, makes it a pleasant site to look at and makes it, and kind of curates it anyway. Whereas the town website just seems to, it's just lists of things.
Right.
So that, again, this is something I would love for an archivist to advise us on.
And that's, totally, I agree. And I see these steps to, to make it more appealing, more attractive, is something you build on going forward. I think it's incremental process, and it's, it's good to have the vision of how this can evolve and develop down the line. And realistically, I think it's going to take time. But I think the first step in the process is to get everything digitized and online. And once we have that, and people say, oh, that's good, that's boring, you know, or whatever. And then you talk about the need to bring in the archivist to do other stuff. And maybe it's somebody you bring in periodically, I'm saying that to me as well, you know, I have no concept of this. Yeah, absolutely, absolutely.
You know, first step, though, we don't even know what we have, which is, of course, where this all started.
Right.
And we need to get through that first step.
Yes.
But I think we can get, I think we can look past that now. And I think we can look at trying to bring somebody on.
No, I agree.
And it seems, you know, that's going to get done, it's only a matter of a couple of weeks.
Totally agree, I think we should start focusing, how are we going to go about bringing somebody on? For what I'm asking, we look at making thirty grand available. Prefer not to spend that kind of money, but it comes to that, if we do it. Now, we talked about Alex, you and I have talked about the lady who is the archivist in Newbury.
Sure, it's field in her, yeah.
Is she available, do you know if she's available on a part-time basis?
I've not held that conversation with her because I don't have the sense yet that it's appropriate for me to do that, but I'm getting the sense now.
It is, it is. I think that's, you know, she's local, she has experience with the historical nature of the area.
Oh, yeah. She's forgotten more than most of us know.
Yeah, I mean, she probably, is this her full-time job?
Yeah.
Yeah, that could be tricky.
That could be, that could be problematic, how much time do we get?
Well...
She also might know something.
We get her for about four hours, six hours a week at this.
Yeah, then this, then this process is in motion. And I think we've talked about, I think it's something we see that has to be done by June or September. It could be done as we go, you know, in a year, a year and a half, that could, and I don't think it'll take that long. But the process is done, you know, and we want to do it at minimal cost if we can, you know, so.
Well, and keep in mind that Digital Commonwealth is free and they do the cataloguing, all the cataloguing. Now I'm going to forget what I just said, what I wanted to say.
That's okay.
Oh, now I got it. I'm not, I'm not sure whether digital material can be posted in two sites. Do you know? Like, could we conceivably post it on the town site, but then post some stuff on Digital Commonwealth?
Well, I think if you, if you can't, at least through one portal you can access, there should be a link to other sites. So if we have to put something on a separate lane, and the Historical Commission does also, and the town is severed, if you go into that one portal, there's a tech person here. They'll tell you. I thought you could go in through one portal and be able to have links set up on that page that could then direct you to...
With Digital Commonwealth, I think you can, I'm not sure about the town website.
Okay, well, that's what we need to find out.
I don't know about the places that you just mentioned. They're websites, is that right?
Yes.
All of those?
Websites for the organizations.
Digital Commonwealth?
Digital Commonwealth, that's through BPL.
Oh, true.
So if I went on Google and said, websites are there about history of Newbury? Would I come up with anything?
You might come up with the Digital Commonwealth, because as I've done some photo research for some, for a little history project we're working on, just Googling Newbury, various things in Newbury, Digital Commonwealth is a resource that does pop up with links. So they do have some things.
And then the Shrav, which is through Mass, Mass Archives, I'm not going to get the title quite right, who the roving archivist was with. They have a landing page waiting there for us, Newbury, with a link to our website. But that's all that's there.
All rovers need to roam, huh?
Yeah, it's a landing page, it's right there, like, wow, we're there, Newbury's there. I don't remember sending anything.
They always end up after doing the roving archivist, anticipation of that.
Yeah, exactly.
Is that somebody, Alex, you talked to the lady in Newbury, is there somebody else that we could talk to in terms of being available to this process, the roving archivist?
Well, yes. And see, that's where it gets strange, because I think we did go with the roving archivist and with the Mass, the Society for Historical Records, blah, 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 through the Mass History Center at UMass. I think they would want their stuff on their site. So it's kind of like exxon role.
Back to your question.
Yeah.
Is it available to both sites?
Yeah, that's the question that, I mean, I could actually could answer this gentleman or ask him and the guy at the MBLC about it.
I mean, and that's, I think that's where we want to be getting to now. That's the process. I mean, we want to have these discussions with somebody, and I'd rather do it sooner than later than the request to make thirty grand available.
Yeah, I will, I will ask, I will put those questions out to these two.
Yeah, that's fine, and Alex, in the meantime, a few...
Oh, Sharon's.
And see, you know, get her, like, something sort of, if she knows somebody else who is, who is available, is to put more time into it.
There's Lorna Condon.
Okay, all right.
She was archivist for Historic England until she retired a couple of years ago. You would know the name, she's the sister of Freeman Condon, Seligman over there in Salisbury. And, you know...
So let's start investigating that.
And there's also the Ben and Harden, I think I sent you.
Yes.
Right.
From Digital Cut, where they actually be dealing with libraries that have done it. So we can fire them, fire these questions away.
Yeah, I think we need to register for that...
Yes.
Presentation.
Yes, I started to today, if you can turn that.
Yeah, yeah.
Probably, yeah, it's probably me doing it.
Shadowing this, you mentioned the one point of entry, and I will go back to because it's moved a little bit further forward, the observation I've been prior, that the Historical Society of Old Newbury, the Museum of Old Newbury, will be creating an archival repository on our campus, and it will be staffed, money's another issue, of course, but it will be staffed at least two days a week with a qualified research archivist who would have interest in the archives, the records, what have you, the collection, or the museum, but would also, of course, be available for research guidance following inquiries either to Town Hall, Town Clerk, or here.
So that, I mean, that was kind of one of the things that started this whole process was, how do we answer these questions and how do we manage our collection and all that?
Yeah.
So, you know, that's, that's a relief to know that we don't have to fret over that anymore.
It ain't going to happen tomorrow. It's probably not going to happen for a couple of years.
Okay.
But we're making money, you know, this is probably a three hundred thousand dollar project, just great physical environment within which it can be accomplished. And the museum doesn't have that kind of money.
We can't duplication, you know, and since these documents should all be, I mean, maybe they're going to be in different places. Maybe that's just...
I think...
No, it will be in different places.
I mean, well, obviously...
We do not have...
You have all the snow photographs up on Digital.
Yeah. No, no, we have a portion of them on.
Which one were there?
The snow photographs.
Chris Snow, there's a Byfield who still is, I think, alive. No, he passed?
He actually passed.
Okay. I collected all kinds of stuff, including photographs of Byfield at Newbury. Probably in 2014, maybe 2015, the Museum of Old Newbury bought the collection from Chris Snow. And on the one hand, we used it, How I Met Eugene, to create the photo book on Newbury. And Jean was kind enough to put it out here to sell it, once it was published in eighteen. Actually, the library sold as many copies as the museum itself.
Well, do you need more, people are asking?
Serious?
Yes, I have, I just, so I wouldn't forget to ask. They brought this with me, yeah?
Yes.
They're asking.
We would tell some.
There might, I feel like these ones still here. Look, I'm looking.
Not at school. Yeah, all right, anyway, you know, in terms of the single point of direction for research on topics of Newbury, eventually, you know, this will come into play, into place. But in the short run, I think it is, you know, finish the cataloguing, let's agree upon, you know, an amount not to exceed, which we'll put forward, but to bring in diverting, you know, subset of this is to get it, the entire project off the backs of library staff.
Right.
I mean, you conceived it into shape.
And I think it's going to rest with the library and probably us. You're a trickster then, Paul. And then once it's done, it's then somebody else's responsibility.
And there will be, as you pointed out, episodic opportunities to further catalog, further digitize, and all that kind of thing. Your point about the availability of library and NTL materials in multiple places is well taken. Because once, once stuff is on Digital Commonwealth, dot com, or dot net, whatever now.
Dot org.
Dot org, thanks.
So do you allow me to formally vote?
Yes.
Yeah, yeah, no, this is a budget item, yeah, sure.
I think it's that one.
And will you go forward with Leslie and Town Hall to place an item on Town Warrant?
You don't have to. No, that, that takes the place of that, so we don't have to go to Town Meeting. That's what this will do.
They don't oversee private monies from our funds, right?
They, it's, it's with the town, you know, so they, you know, they have it invested someplace, I would imagine. Yeah, so we do not have to, so what it's doing, Alex, is alleviating the need for us to go to Town Meeting and ask for thirty, twenty five, thirty, twenty dollars.
Even ten or twelve, I think the original warrant was maybe five.
Yeah.
But.
So this.
You know, I'm not sure it's, you know, to be waived off.
Yeah.
I think it'll have to be brought to the town's attention.
Well, I think you bring it to their retention, but I, I really think you, you know, I guess I use the term of discussion, goodwill, in terms of, you know, what we're doing here by providing this money for this purpose. And I think there should be some PR around this. It doesn't necessarily have to be a Town Meeting as we go forward.
Be nice to have a little article in the paper.
It would be good to have that, yes, absolutely, and get the, get the word out that way. By virtue of the fact that that email that we got about this topic, once we appropriated and authorized this money, obviously, the word gets back there and then gets disseminated in the community that we are in fact doing this, and this project is moving forward. And those who are interested, it would now be a tool to us. And, you know, so, yeah, and I think it shows that, you know, this whole, that we're engaged in what's going on in the community, and it's not just a one way street. Yeah, yeah, so I think that's the message that we want to set out to people, because when, you know, the resources that we have, we want to use them for the benefit of the whole community, and once they're gone, we're going to have to depend on the large S, if you will, of the, of the community to support us with things that need to be done. So, you know, when we have it, we use it, and when we, in need of it, we're gonna request it, so.
It'd be nice if we had some UMass students doing projects on it.
Yeah, I mean, I, you know, again, this is something I know very little about. So, you know, it's, I think I'm gonna, I'm gonna learn as we're going along and we start interacting with an, I've met an archivist, at least not to my knowledge, anyway. So, you know, once we start talking with them and interacting with them, things are gonna come up that I don't think any of us could even conceive of now, because it's not something that we do. Alex probably more so, because, you know, you hang out with that crowd, and, you know. The closest I got to her is.
Yes, you can get.
That's it. I painted a history, but other than that.
It's six thirty, so we, and we have a lot of other items, so we may wanna.
We wanna start talking, don't we?
We might wanna do the vote.
Ellen, Ellen, it's our alarm clock.
Okay.
Yeah, so you.
All right, I like you, I supported that out.
I'm doing Dick Reven's job today.
I make a move that we approve cash money or investment in archival organization up to the amount of thirty thousand dollars.
So you, you moved to authorize the use of thirty thousand.
Up to thirty.
Up to. So thirty thousand for, uh, what are we calling this?
Archives, Town Archives Ministry.
Town.
Cataloging.
Cataloging.
We'll call it a process, okay?
Process.
Okay.
Okay. Funds to come from. Come from.
May I, I do?
Yep. May you give. Okay? Good, thank you.
I need this.
A second, we have a second, okay? All of us in favor?
All of us.
Okay.
Thanks, Terry.
Yes, all right.
Thanks, Sharon. Cutting through the never ending verbiage. Okay, well, we got.
Okay, so we, we've done the update. Okay, COVID mitigation brought up procedures with our town, and we'll keep this very simple. The town came up with a directive, what, a week or so ago, on how staff would be masked and have to mingle and so forth and so on. There was no requirement on the part of patrons, of public coming into a municipal building wearing a mask, which to me seemed kind of intuitive in terms of trying to protect people, so.
You needed to get a cup of coffee, but you don't need it to go into the Town Hall.
Right, yeah, yeah, I'll come into the library. So I, I reached out to Tracy and had a conversation with her. She concurred, and I told her that we would like to have masks required. She concurred, recognizing that it's our responsibility. That's why the town wouldn't have mandated it for the library. She recognized that statutorily, we have, and the terminology is, the custody and management of the library. Okay, that gives us the authority to do this. That's actually Chapter seventy eight, Section eleven.
Correct.
Okay, so, given that, and knowing that we were going to meet today, I advised Jean and Erin to start putting that information out, that as of the thirteenth, assuming that we are going to vote in the affirmative, otherwise we take the science. That the thirteenth masks would be required of people coming into the building. And I also then emailed to Jean and Erin, we are not, they are not going to become the masked police. If somebody pushes back, back off, okay? And you request respectfully, as you do always, and if they push back, you back off. Say, okay.
And do you want us to mention that it was a trustee approved initiative?
Yeah, well, you can, I mean, because the town has.
Well, who made this decision?
Oh, you can say that, absolutely, yeah, because we have it, it's our, you know, it's, we don't have a lot of authority under Chapter seventy eight, okay? That happens to be, you know, because most of Chapter thirty eight's talking about the stuff that doesn't even apply to seventy eight.
Yep.
Got it, yeah, yeah, so.
I was curious, but we never had to go down masks for Zoom meetings before, right?
No, we didn't, and why we have to this time, I'm not sure. The town, you know, did it the last thing, and we just went along with it, we never questioned, you know, we just did it.
It was smart.
It was the thing to do.
It was smart.
It was smart, exactly, this was because, this was my reaction, and the staff reaction, I think, was the fact that this is absurd.
Yes.
We're requiring the staff, you know, people coming in, interacting with them. Maybe in Town Hall, it's less of an issue, because they've got plexiglass separating them, but, you know, it's, here it's different. We got, there's plexiglass at the surface, but you're interacting with a patron, you're helping a patron, you're assisting a patron. You're in close communication with a patron.
At a computer.
At a computer. And we had children coming.
For an extended period.
For an extended period, we had children coming in, so that prompted my request. And Terry, Tracy was very receptive and secure. So, that having been said, yeah, somebody wants to know where this came from? Yeah.
Trustees.
Trustees exercising their authority.
Do we have a supply of disposable masks, which we could offer?
Uh, we do, you probably need to order new ones, and of course, now those, those regular ones aren't supposed to be used, and these are hard to get, these aren't even, you guys.
But they're better than nothing.
They're better, yeah, absolutely, exactly.
You're going to be trying to store it anyway.
Yeah, so if I can, I'll order some more.
Yeah, okay, use what you have.
Yeah.
So I guess we need a vote to, as of.
Tomorrow?
January thirteenth, or.
I don't mind having mine anymore.
You want to say all patrons are?
Yes.
Well, so maybe before this gets voted on, what do you want to do about the community room? I mean, the Girl Scouts will be, they're on their own.
Let's just require masks, and then we can talk about the community room.
Masks in the building, though?
In the building.
Yes.
But that includes the community room, that's why.
We're in it, right?
Yes.
Yes.
So people, you're asking, if people come in and use the room, are we going to say, hey, everybody in the room has to be wearing a mask?
That's what I'm just putting out there for discussion.
Yeah, I think you, you have the signage, and that would be the expectation if you're in the building, yeah.
What's your sign say, anyway?
Yeah.
Masks are required in the building?
Mask required.
Mask required in the building.
Like a penalty of death, okay.
So.
Literally.
Erin, do you think we would need to contact people that are, have the room booked now, and also let people know when they book the room?
I don't think so, I think that our, our mandate is gonna go out tomorrow, and actually has been out. There's a yellow bar on the website, and I think, though, from now on, if somebody wants to book the room, we should inform them of that.
Oh, yeah, they put it on, is there a form that they fill out? You can put it on that form.
Yep.
You're filling out the form.
And as Sharon pointed out earlier, on the statistic report and verbally earlier at the meeting, requests for use are being lifted, canceled, as you will.
Yeah.
So it's probably less of an issue, and besides, in this environment here on the North Shore, folks wear them.
Yeah, for the most part.
It isn't universal, nothing is, except debt and taxes.
For yoga, yoga started a four week beginners yoga process, process, program yesterday. And they, it was never intended to be mask wearing, she doesn't want to teach with masks on. So I asked her, if there's four people, one of which is our Ellen, if she can be sure people are spread out as far as possible, open windows, of course, it was eight degrees out.
You'll love it.
But I'm comfortable with that, and you're comfortable with it.
Go ahead, I'm comfortable with that, because what's going to happen? People are gonna be in here, some of them are gonna wear masks, and some aren't, and again, I want to help as I was here. Not gonna come in here and tell them, please do not do that. For your own well being.
Yeah.
I don't care about the library, it's everybody's safety.
Yeah.
I have no idea what anybody's reaction would be.
Yeah.
And I don't want to know, okay, so if they're not wearing them, okay?
So that begs the question, if somebody does walk in not wearing a mask, is it a great reminder?
You can ask them, just say.
Remind them that they're required.
Masks are now required.
And leave it at that.
Or just leave it at that, and they say, yeah, thank you, and they move on, and they don't put a mask on.
Yeah.
And just say, you know, we have masks available if you can.
Exactly, not for the, not for the mask, it's part of the service.
Well, that's a top quality service mask, because you didn't bring your own.
Yeah.
No.
No.
I wouldn't say, I wouldn't say that.
I do not.
So, as of January thirteenth, all patrons entering the building are required to wear masks. Is that my English sufficient?
That's cool.
A motion?
So move.
Second?
Yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay.
Very quickly, all in.
Sure question.
Is an approval on this. This is, this is a lot of technical equipment that we're, somebody has to, I signed, who has to. Terry, so I thought if Dick just signed that. But I became aware that technically, we're supposed to get trustee approval for some of the surplus material. These are all pieces of equipment, the computers that are no longer compatible with Windows ten, you know, print monitors that are booped out or incompatible, the Zebra rebranding printer died. So that's, that, if you make the motion to approve this, and Dick signs that one, or that.
Approve the disposal?
Yes.
You don't try to resell them or anything?
Um, no, I take them to Best Buy, and they destroy the hard drives of the PCs, so that there's no material anymore.
So it is.
And, you know, I looked into that a little bit, especially during COVID, a lot of schools and things were finding, you know, people were refurbishing computers and getting them to schools, but that's, that's a very involved process.
Oh, it's true, yes.
Unless somebody wants to take the, the ball and rumble down on that, I.
I did it on the state level.
Yeah.
And they have an art, they've got an office that you can walk with, and it still took forever. You know, we got chump change for all those, I think it was a hundred fifty bucks for like fifty thousand dollars. Stuff that.
Where's my sign from?
I gave it you.
It's not signed, no.
I had signed it on the map.
And I signed it. I gave it you.
Erin, do you have it?
I did, it would be a magic trick, no. I thought you just screwed up. I'm sitting out there, so I will lose it.
Okay, I can be questioned, but I do know I signed it for a hundred percent across the table. Okay, so there's a motion to approve the surplus, the surplus material.
Disposal.
Disposal of surplus material as presented.
So move.
Okay.
Let's get rid of it.
Seconded, okay, all in favor of we do it, okay?
Did you need to vote on going virtual for?
Yes, we do, that's, that's on the list.
Yes.
That's on the other. Yeah, okay.
Well, this could be a meeting in and of itself, empowering process for new library director.
Right.
Oh, Lord.
Yeah. Okay, that's, that's a job we've got to take on. You know, I think it's, we probably have to have another meeting real soon to have a discussion or focus entirely on that, decide how we want to go, I think we have two options. Do something internally and do something externally. You know, just go from there, decide what the, what the board wants to do. I did have an opportunity to talk to Mark Glitman today.
Oh, you did?
Yeah, I gave him a, an email, and he called me. Yeah, he ran through the whole hiring process and so forth.
See the personnel?
He's chairman of the Human Resources Board, yeah.
Yeah, I know. In Newbury?
In Newbury, yeah, we have human resources.
Yeah, I know.
It's Mark, Jeremy, Diane, and a couple of other people.
Yeah.
Yeah, and he's available to help us and, you know, do whatever we want to do, so. In terms of, and I'll be, yeah, okay, doing this with your city. Yeah, most of my grace got wrecked, we were on that.
So I love that.
Yeah, I know, I do.
I can scoot out.
No, no.
You might as well hear, you know, you know, the, the process, he didn't give me specifics on what process is internally. He said, I probably have to get that from Tracy, which I will, I'm meeting with her next week, I was scheduled to meet with her yesterday. Unfortunately, she had to change it, and that's like, I'm meeting with her next Thursday, so I will have.
The Newbury Town Library is closing in fifteen minutes.
The new reach-out library is closing in fifteen minutes, please hurry up to your aisles to the circle.
Yeah. I'm not quite sure how the board wants to go, and we're not gonna vote on that tonight anyway, but, you know, it can be internal, it can be external, there's gotta be a way to do this, and I want to put the pieces in place sooner than later.
Does it need to be a subcommittee about that?
Yeah, yeah, it probably should, maybe you and Alex, yeah, you and Alex can be the subcommittee.
All right.
Talk about it, see how you wanna, wanna proceed, and we'll share the information online, and, you know.
Okay.
Then we'll set up a meeting, you know, probably in the next three weeks or so.
You might want, you might want Dick Raymond on that, because he's, I think he's gone through this before.
Okay.
I think. But it's, it's totally up to you.
Yeah, yeah, we've gotta, we've gotta find out from Tracy, what, if there is an internal process, what is it? And what are the steps? It was, I found it interesting that Mark did not have the details on that, so they don't get into that. Theirs is more a theory of, you know, looking at people's qualifications and that kind of, the nitty-gritty of the actual hiring is done by others. Now, he was good, he was helpful, he was insightful, he had things to recommend that we look at and focus on, you know. So, it was good, called me back, and I pulled out faster than I thought, so. Spent a fair amount of time on the phone, he was going off to a meeting, he said, can I call you back later, and he did, you know, great.
Good.
It's good. So, that's kind of where that's at, so, you know, I think the, my thought is that whatever we do, we want to do it, look at, you know, what's the end date? And back up from that in terms of making decisions in terms of how we're going to proceed, and go from there. And then just see what the, what the board wants to do.
Okay, Devon, question? Are you certified librarian?
I am certified with M.D.L.T.A. to be a director for populations ten thousand and under.
Cool.
It's one thing that, you know, I think it goes without saying, I think Erin and I both said it to you, but the sooner the better, for lack of a better way to put it, just because that provides.
No, I'm, I'm just...
You know, the ability to hire actually somebody else. It would be wonderful if we knew what our budget is going to be, so if you can kind of, which Tracy's arm, see if there's just any expectation that's happening is going to change.
Just, I realize we would be in pain, but, yeah, sorry, we'll say everything.
Yeah.
But no, we'll try to find out what the budget is and go forward, and I will have a further conversation with her about the process and what we're thinking, and kind of the focus that we want to get this thing done sooner than later, for a number of reasons.
Yeah, okay.
So, we'll let that go. Okay, the ARPA funds, this is the COVID money?
Yes.
Okay.
Erin, you know, she's got, right in front of us, I think she's got the quote for the self-checkout, but what she doesn't have is the time to do it. Even though I don't think it's a major proposal, I think it's just a very, you know.
Yeah, well, we've gotta find out, what, is there a proposal form?
I don't think so.
Is it just writing a...
I think so.
A line for this?
I think so.
It's a narrative.
It's a narrative.
Yeah, and I think the brief, I think brief is fine.
Maybe that's something we can talk to Dick about.
That, you met our minds. Yeah.
All right, but again, that was something I was gonna talk to her about yesterday, but, you know, I'll talk to her about it next week.
Yeah, I mean, she didn't say anything about a Templar or...
Okay, so I will talk to her about this next week and see, you know, at least plant the seed that we're putting forward this self-checkout, which is beneficial in terms of people handling less stuff, people being in close contact, I mean, you know. Somebody's gonna have to wipe their machine down on a regular basis, so, and so, that's, yeah. So, you know, and I looked at, talked with Erin about it last week, or this week, I don't know. Where it would be physically located, and right across from the syrup desk, where the mittens were last week, anyway. Makes great sense, because it's right in Catherine's line of sight, as opposed to off someplace where somebody can, not that they're doing it, but I mean, they know somebody's checking the book out, and they need to get a sheet of any assistance. What I did look at, I think we need to do some electrical work also, so whatever the dollar amount is, we could say it was about six thousand dollars for this thing. Probably throw a couple of thousand dollars more onto our requests, so that we have sufficient money to run the power to this location. There's a plug further down under that counter, that probably can be tapped and just fed into that, if two thousand is strong, then it would probably be, but.
And that hardly needs repair, anyway?
Yeah, no, that's right, that's the one that's pushed, pushed back in the wall, yes, yeah. Okay, if they can fix that, and then we're a wire at the same time, with a plug for this machine to go into, yeah, I think makes good sense. And again, that article was in the Sunday Globe, the local section, this past Sunday, the week before, a lot of the libraries commented on their, they were gonna continue with their self-checkout systems. Just as a cautionary approach to doing things, so.
Yeah, and a lot of them had, had them before COVID.
Yeah, they did, yes, yeah, so, all right.
Nice.
So, that's, we'll do with the proposal, I'll get more information from Tracy next week on what the format is, all right, and go from there.
Okay.
All right. And what else, oh. We need a motion to add virtual meeting to our repertoire of meeting.
I'll do that, and I wish Dick was scared a second.
Yeah.
He's there in spirit, yes. I will second for him.
Yes, okay, all in favor?
Yes, definitely.
So, Alex, whatever that, however you want the language to read, that's fine.
Authorization.
Authorization to, yeah, conduct meetings by Zoom.
Correct.
Hopefully for one month, and after that, everything will be one for one.
I don't think so.
I don't think so.
And I have no problem with that, I'll go forward, you know, that's okay, we'll see, we'll see how it goes.
And it could help Margaret to be able to attend all better.
Absolutely, absolutely, yeah, we, you know, I personally prefer in person, but, you know.
Yeah, of course.
Yeah, but if we have to do it by Zoom, and that's the way we get everybody involved and engaged, then let's do that.
And being able to focus on the important stuff, you need to focus on instead of...
Yeah, the mask, yeah, right.
Yeah.
I'm trying to breathe.
Yeah.
I have a question on this, do we want to work in any language above the OWL? Is that anything that would need to be loaded on if we do figure out that technology, and we could implement and have a hybrid meeting that was both...
I think that would be great, I mean, because that is the direction a lot of places are going in, and we're really fortunate, we have this device that we haven't even tried to put into practice yet.
But do we want any...
What is it?
It's, it's called the OWL, and it basically...
OWL as in the bird?
As in the bird.
It can turn and...
It can turn, you know, it creates a hybrid meeting, so that the people in the room and the people on their computer are interacting in a way you can't do with just Zoom on a computer. It, you know, it hears the other people talking in the room, and it turns to them, and then if somebody in their home talks, they show up on the computer, it's just, it's very, very interactive. I think you're gonna see a lot of it in the future.
Okay.
And we happened to get it because of this warrant.
We're not giving them.
It's a software.
Yeah.
It's a, it's a unit.
A hardware.
And Katie after, Katie after got it out of the box today, because she thought it was gonna help her with turrican, but she was off on that, but she said it didn't look that difficult to use.
And so, what do we need to do with this?
Well, my question is, like, if we're, so we voted, you voted in to be able to have meetings virtually?
Yes.
Is there any thing that would prevent meetings from being hybrid, from being part in person, part from home at the same time, utilizing this OWL system?
Okay. My, I guess my initial answer is, no, there's nothing that prevents it. The thing that was tricky here was the fact that when the selectmen voted to approve the suspension of the, to accept the governor's suspension of the open meeting requirements. They required that whatever board was going to be virtually has to vote that process. So, us going forward, we're all set now, because we've said one of our options for meeting will be virtual. So, we could do it hybrid, based on that.
The hybrid wasn't allowed when, when the governor's order went away.
Right.
The town didn't want to do hybrid.
Hybrid, no.
Unless you have severe disability or something. But since we're still under the governor's order...
We're under the governor's order, and the town, and the select board has accepted that. That's the process, they have, actually even...
I think they're meeting tonight, actually.
Yeah, so, so they could be doing it virtually, I don't know, I don't really watch any of the meetings, but, you know, it's, yeah, we could do it hybrid.
Okay.
So, if you get this thing operational, so we could, we could be sitting here, and Dick and Margaret could be at home.
Right.
Yeah, the tricky thing now is, I don't think there's any stipulations, and anything that I read is the reasons why somebody was going to be virtual. I mean, it talked about personal health, emergencies, geographic location, and all of that, but then, with the governor's lifting of that, of the open meeting law requirements, I think it takes that away for now. It may come back, you know, once, because that only goes until April, I think, to his order.
April first, not even the end of April.
Was it April first?
Yeah.
Okay, I thought it was later than that. Okay, maybe about the twenty-two of this, a year, so.
It'll extend it.
Yeah, no, I think so, I think so.
If needed.
If needed, yeah, I think it will.
The way it's going.
So, did you vote?
On what?
We voted to approve...
Yes, okay.
Use of virtual meeting, and that would encompass hybrids?
Yes, yeah, so we...
It would encompass use of the OWL, or standard Zoom.
We can do that going forward, so the next meeting will be either virtual or hybrid.
Okay.
Okay, so.
I might, I might be in my office.
There you go.
Yeah. Okay, so, any other business?
Long range plan, I do not get to put as much thought into this as being built up there, but my thoughts are, you know, we got a lot going on, obviously, and I'm here till the end of April. My goal was always to get the long-range plan fully launched before I left.
Okay.
I'm not sure if I'll have it fully launched, but I think if you're at me to vote for the idea of sort of streamlining it and making it...
Probably leave the door open?
Are the, do the genealogy people need it? Okay, yes, please leave that door open.
Thank you.
Yes, yes. Just wanted to make sure they weren't forgotten, you know.
Oh, yeah.
How many people were you on?
I don't know, I didn't know that they came after. So, the idea that I have is of sort of streamlining it, maybe not making it, I mean, obviously, you can approach a strategic plan in all varieties of ways, we could make a big, huge community event, and that's obviously not going to happen during COVID anyway, but... So, for what MLS offers, they offer a couple of meetings, they offer one meeting. What I think might make sense is to have them facilitate one meeting. We'll try our best to get community members, but if we can't pull it off, it's perfectly fine to have it be trustees and staff. You know, it's not ideal, but it's perfectly fine. And then launch the survey, which can conceivably go out with tax forms, when the taxes go out.
We just had one now.
Yeah, so it'd be April, I guess, when that, that would happen.
So, it was up for the third quarter?
But there are so many other ways to get to people now, and I can get more specific at the next meeting.
Okay.
But so that by April thirtieth, most of the data will have been collected. So, what will be left for everybody after I'm done is consolidating the data, sifting through the data, writing, writing reports, it's not a big, huge, lengthy thing. You really can make it as simple as you want, or as involved as you want, and I think there, I think, I know the MLS, when I first met with them, I didn't tell them I was retiring. I think knowing that I'm retiring, they will go out on a limb to help us through the process.
Okay.
So, if that's, you know...
They provide a consultant to us?
Yes, yes, and that person...
They did it last night, didn't they?
Yes. And, you know, it's ideal to have two, maybe three different brainstorming sessions, but I know we can streamline it, get it, get it together, maybe almost at the same time as we send out a survey. And we, what I think is a great idea, good night, everybody.
Good night.
Is to just call a couple of random people, maybe your next door neighbor, or whatever, you know, a couple of people, and just read the survey to them, ask the questions to them, just because it's more of a, of a interpersonal experience than just, you know, filling out a form, whatever. Including some town people, town leaders, like select board members and things, we'll give you, we'll give you that job.
I hope so.
But anyway, so streamlined, this is what I'm promoting, streamline, not quite what I originally envisioned, and getting it kind of launched and data ready to sift through by the time I go.
Okay.
If that works for everybody, I won't give you that.
Trying to comprehend, think slowly.
Yeah.
Okay.
And it's not due until December first.
Okay.
December.
Oh, yes.
Well, you shouldn't even be able to get that done in April, so.
Yeah, I mean, I think...
I guess I see the opportunity to engage people, okay? Because one of the things that stands out in my mind from the last time, was when we had a meeting in the history room. JR was one of the people who anticipated.
Right.
And it was like a light went on for him.
Right.
It was.
You know, like he had, like he had no clue as to what was going on here. I think he had, JR COVID, the selectman.
Okay.
He, I think he had either just one, or he was running. He was brand new, so, okay, understood, but you've lived in town your whole life, but you have no concept of what's going on in the library, and a lot of criticism, you know, it's just the fact of life. So, how many other people are there out there like that, that if we use this and had a couple of meetings to get input from people as an opportunity to make them aware of what takes place here?
And that was completely where my head was when I first realized we needed to do this, so I completely be talked out of it. Especially because I'll be got after April thirty.
Well, so you may still be engaged, though, by being a member of the Long or H Planning Committee.
I, I, that still needs to be determined.
That's amazing.
Where, wherever you're going, where will you be?
South Carolina.
She will be on the beach.
She'll be on the beach.
I'll be on the beach, right.
Okay, it'll be too cold in April to go on, so, so you're not, you're not, you're not gonna get away.
Zoom in.
I'm, I'm gonna quote you on those words, when I need to.
But we could maybe have some Zoom meetings.
We have that conversation, yeah.
We could maybe have some Zoom meetings.
Yeah, I mean, I, I thought, one reason I went down this road was thinking COVID and...
Yeah, 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 I'm thinking, I guess I was thinking beyond, even beyond April, you know, hopefully, things would be better at that point, if, say, come June, you know, things are looking better. We, we have a meeting, and we get input from people who are sitting around having a couple of... We have a meeting and we get input from people who are sitting around having a cup of coffee, maybe.
Absolutely, no, I love that. And I think maybe the solution to making it not, as I said to Erin, that my whole envision with, with the timetable of this was that she was going to get her, her feet wet. I told her I didn't want her to drown. So also if trustees maybe took a little bit more of the.
Absolutely.
The, you know, the procedural parts. That, because it would be a lot.
Not going to jump into the fire.
Throwing the baby in with the bad ones. So, yeah, so consider those two options and next time.
Let's continue the conversation.
But meanwhile, I can probably reach out to the, forgotten name, but the woman I talked to with, before the end of the year, let her know where things stand and then we'll be ready.
Yeah, I'd like to have her come in.
Yeah, we can start.
Check with us.
She might be able, you know, they used to do that, they would use to be so available, but they, like every place, our short staff and with COVID.
Oh, maybe we can do a Zoom.
They try to just do, because they go over to the state.
Right, we'll do a Zoom one.
Yeah, maybe in a meeting. I thought it was Zoom in.
Just have a conversation. So we become educated.
Right.
Again, we did it, what, five years ago, six years ago? But, you know, that's like ancient history now, so.
Yeah. But it's good that you've been through it, so it's.
That's before my time.
Yeah, yes, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, I was part of that too.
Right.
And I sat that one out because I had done that one five years before that.
Oh, okay. No, it's a good process.
Yes, and it's a great process with new staff.
Yeah, and it's, it's a way to engage the new staff because you're getting input from that thing. Because now I'm valued, you think I have something to offer, and you always want to do that. You always want to do it, yeah, so. Okay, when do we want to meet again? Because the subcommittee has to discuss what the process is. And you can start doing whatever you want to do in terms of talking about this. And I will talk with Tracy next week. If there's anything that comes out of that meeting that is, you know, important to this discussion, because I'm sure it will be, knowing her.
Yeah.
It will be, she'll have, you know, she'll have some guidance and, you know.
I have no plans for going anywhere.
Okay, all right. I'm going to Florida.
When?
The end of February, maybe. Yeah.
Are you going to fly?
Yeah, well, flying isn't the problem. Actually, being on a plane is probably one of the, the best places, the problem is in the air. Airplane.
Yeah.
Because the air exchange on the plane, out of the crazies on the plane.
Yes.
But, yeah, the airport is the, is more hazardous, the area of Florida itself.
Well, no.
But we've got a condo that's right on the beach. Literally, we lock out the back door and you're in the sand. And there's a Publix across the street, the supermarket.
That's all you need.
Hey, perfect, here we go.
It was nice.
You can walk it home.
Yeah, so we have friends down there that we'll wave to and that's.
So do you want to stick with 5:30?
Yeah, 5:30, sorry.
So are you talking about two separate meetings, one for the subcommittee and one for the general trustees?
Well, the subcommittee does not have to be a formal posted meeting.
Right.
Because it's just the two of us.
Yeah, it's just the two of them, okay.
You mean, right, wrong?
Yeah. No, 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 it's just the two of you, you're the subcommittee. You are in.
Would it make sense for Mark to meet with him?
Based on my conversation with him, I guess I could share with them some of the comments that he had. I can text them, I don't text them, but email them to you. And it's, but if you've ever been involved in hiring anybody, it's the same thing that you would hear from anybody. You know, qualifications, temperament, you know, sharing these things, you know, interaction with others, all of those kinds of things that you would expect from anybody.
Acceptable appearance.
I would.
So, you know, and again, as, as I said, I've said.
Tough girl.
She probably doesn't want to hear it anymore, but as much as we're talking about this, there's no guarantee.
Guaranteed.
Okay, please, let's clearly understand that. You know, I have no idea what further input and discussions are out there and who's going to do what and say what. And I just don't know, so. But I think we want to have a clear course of action because our primary responsibility under chapter 78 is the hiring of the director. That's our priority.
Something.
Okay?
And it is a contractual.
It is a contractual position, absolutely.
That's where I thought Mark might come in on contracts, but maybe not.
No, he, his is, he was good. He's very, he knows, he knows the business. I wish he was more, that it was more of a real HR department. But it's not, he's, it's an advisory group, is basically what it is. And I think they feel the complaints and things like that.
So he didn't even weigh in on like the interview process, especially if it's an internal? Because I've been curious about that.
No, actually he did, he suggested that I talk to Tracy about that. So that's.
That's where Nancy was also.
I know Nancy was, you know, as I, as I said to him in my email, you know, we were spoiled.
Yeah.
Nancy took the whole thing the last time. Handled the whole thing. And now she's gone and it's us neophytes who are left to deal with this, you know.
And you had to get information from different sources, Tracy and.
Yeah, whereas she just, you know.
Who was Nancy?
Nancy was a trustee, Nancy Colombo.
With an HR.
She, she says she's an HR person and that she had been on the town's human resources committee.
And she was a trustee.
And she was a trustee, and she and Mark, she, they know each other, so she worked with him. She put all the documents together, the ads and everything that had to go out and, you know.
Yeah.
I have no clue how that happens, so. Yeah, so.
All right, I'll get there. So what about Wednesday, February 16th?
Sooner.
At 5:30, sooner? Is this for the regular trustee meeting?
Yeah.
Okay.
Well, I have no reason why I think, but I think we should do it sooner.
Okay, February 2nd?
Sounds good.
Okay, what's on the 2nd?
The trustees meeting.
Okay.
And do we want to make that a virtual meeting? Yes.
Call it later.
Okay.
See what.
See how the, see how the coronavirus. All right. Now, the thing with virtual meetings, the agenda that gets posted has to say that it's a virtual meeting. All of the documents that were handed out here tonight have to be online.
Before the meeting.
I will not have a statistics report.
Then you don't hand it out at the meeting.
Right, well, my statistics won't only in yet for January.
For the January 2nd, okay, for the February 2nd, right, that's fine. It's something you can send out to us after the.
So this is new?
Yes. Yes, and the other thing is, the other part of it is the, I've got to find my script again, I've got to do that.
Oh, yes.
I saw it online yesterday, so I can't. The third piece of it is the minutes, a draft of the minutes have to be posted 48 hours after the meeting.
A draft?
A draft.
So unapproved minutes?
Unapproved minutes, it has to indicate that they are draft. Not get approved, you can put whatever you want, it's draft, you know.
And it has to be within?
Within 48 hours.